Commissioners Court of Brazos County will be meeting regular session on December the 28th, 2020 to 10 a.m. Commissioners Court Room, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is identification, pledge allegiance to U.S. Texas Flag Commissioner, Colby Valiebo.
Please follow with me. Father God, we thank you for this day and we thank you for all your blessings and we thank you for allowing us to be here. Someone said it's nice to see you and my response is it's better to be seen than you and you know what my heart's desire is. I'd like to ask you to bless Brazos County in a very special way. Continue to bless this Commissioners Court. Bless us with your wisdom, with your courage and the strength to get this job done in a way that will honor you Father. We thank you for what you've done. We thank you for all our first responders. We thank you for those that are on the battlefields. We thank you for those that are on the battlefields of life Father. Be with them in all the challenges that we face. Strength in us and keep us. This is your servant's prayer and Jesus now. Amen.
Our glad allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you sir.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns and we've got a couple of folks that wanted to speak. Patrick Bakker.
Yes sir. Thank you for listening to us and we now have a website up and we're just asking y'all to just educate yourselves on and if you'd like to talk to any judge or veteran that's been affected by Veterans Treatment Court, we have all that and I know y'all canceled the workshop we had today and I didn't really appreciate that because we have everybody we need at the table but I'm gonna let that go and I'm gonna pray for y'all and pray that you make the right decision as we are trying to help our area, our surrounding counties and many veterans, their families, their immediate everything that they're about. They've signed a dotted line to serve our country and we're giving them their life back but I have judges that will be glad to talk to you. We have thirty-one of these already. The Brazos County area is behind and I'm just trying to get us caught up and make y'all look awesome and when you do, you can look at the success rates of a Veterans Treatment Court and this is why I get so frustrated. It's at ninety-seven percent. I don't know why this is hard and I just pray that you educate yourself so we're able to help, help a lot of veterans, veteran need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Lonnie Mesh.
Thank y'all for allowing us to speak today. I hope everyone had a Merry Christmas first and foremost. I just want Brazos County to know that we are not giving up. We're gonna keep fighting this fight. This is something that myself as a veteran, I feel like I owe to my fellow veterans. Sometimes we don't know just how much of in a dark place we are and sometimes that results in things that cause us to become justice involved. We will have this service. It will be here. Patrick and myself are always here to help you regardless if we have a vet court or not. You can always reach out to us, MVPN, NAMI. We got you. We're gonna keep fighting for you. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Judge Nun isn't here right now. He wanted to speak but he'll speak at twenty-one. So we will consider and take action on Agenda Items Three through Fifteen. Number Three is approval of appointments of Brazos County Emergency Services District Number One with term limits as follows.
Move Approval A through C.
Second.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number Four is approval of job description.
Move Approval A.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number Five is approval to accept a hundred dollar monetary donation to purchase Christmas gifts for the youth juvenile detention center.
Move Approval Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number Six is approval of public official bonds.
Move Approval Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number Seven is request approval for wire transfer of forty thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ten cents from Brazos County Local Provider Participation Fund for D R I P D Y eleven, round two for qualifying hospitals.
Move Approval Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number Eight is discussion, take possible action on Brazos County Mental Health Court.
Move Approval.
Second and ask for discussion. Judge, this is an item that came up during discussion on the Veterans Court and we got some correspondence from our local judges here in town. It appears that when we hit two hundred thousand, a population of two hundred thousand, that if we wanted to get federal funding and grants for a mental health court that we had to form that court. And I'd asked Judge Hawthorne, since he was in on that correspondence, he's here today, if the court would permit it, to ask him to speak just for half a second on the Mental Health Court and what his knowledge is of that.
Please.
Well, I mean, you're welcome to certainly Judge. Kyle Hawthorne, Judge eighty-fifth District Court. This is kinda new to me but in reading the statute, I'm not real sure and I think Bruce had kind of interpreted it a little bit about the funding of it, setting it up. It seems to me like it's a little backwards and so if it's gonna be considered by the court, which it looks like the statute, and I'm not giving any advisory opinions about how I'd rule on the interpretation of the statute, but it looks to me like it's pretty confusing as to what you would have to do and when. We may need to get some clarification as it relates to that. If the Commissioners are interested in going forth with the Mental Health Court of some sort, I've got lots of questions about it obviously. Who instigates it? Who decides who's going there? Where are we gonna get the resources to provide whatever the infrastructure is that's related to helping the people out? Since we had our only mental health facility leave, we don't have anything but MHMR and they're overwhelmed already from the court system and what the requirements are as far as what we do with some of the people that come in front of us. So I don't know if it's a matter of sitting down and getting some infrastructure at least discussed about to see what the cost is because the way I read the statute, at the end of it, it says if we can't meet those costs, we don't have to do the mental health facility. So this idea of setting up the Mental Health Court, going through the process and figure out whether we can afford it or not and then canceling it just does not seem efficient to me at the very least. And so because of that, I've got lots of questions about it and I don't know what a timetable like that is. Obviously, I don't, I don't condone legislative bodies saying do something and then us going out there and having to figure out how to do it and how to make the budget meet and whatever else is involved in it. I'm not a grant writer. I'm not real sure how grants are obtained or how you audit them. Well, I've got a little bit of an idea of how they're audited having been on some boards before but how we would go about doing that and you know, my first question is, is that kind of like a guarantee? If we ask for the money, we get it no matter what we're spending? I gotta believe that's not what it is. And so I don't know how you go about getting some idea off the bat, what the dollars are that we would be looking at as far as grant money was concerned. I understand you can go out there and look and see, okay, here's a grant that's worth a hundred thousand dollars but qualify for it and then deciding which grants we may get and may qualify for to see if that's gonna meet the budget of a mental health court and then decide then at that particular point in time whether we can afford one first and whether we have the need from an empirical data standpoint of people that are getting or coming into court and whether, I'm assuming it starts with the District Attorney's Office and the County Attorney's Office about whether they feel that the case is one that would be warranted for a mental health court is the first step. If we have two or three mental health cases a year, obviously it's not worth it. If we have two or three hundred, may be worth it. I've got no idea what those numbers are. I know that a majority of the people that come in front of me, we are dealing with mental health a lot of times. The extent of it and the degree, I have no clue until somebody presents me with some evidence about that. So I think all these numbers need to get put down, understood before we move forward on something like that but that may not be what the statute requires us to do. Obviously, we gotta do what the statute requires us to do.
Judge, if you may, if I may, we had this conversation and I am on the same team as you. The ramifications are great, tremendous and there are a lot of working parts that we're gonna have to consider. We're gonna have to make the design. I don't think we should be building a plane while we're flying. So it has been the practice of this court to offer a workshop inviting all the working parts, interested parts and listening to the possibilities. We are gonna have to design it. I've checked all over, even MHMR locally has not had a mental health court here locally. However, there are a few around Texas. So I would suggest that some of us go out and view those, get some information. We're gonna have to be as educated as we possibly can to make this work and because it's a statute, we, it does have priority with us. But you're right, if we make this investigation and good faith effort to put it together and find that we can't, we'll have to, you know, respond that way. And I'm not the attorneys but I'm sure our attorneys will advise us. And I might say, as you heard this morning, we have veterans and a concern that we have been considering but it has to follow the same process. We're gonna have to sit down, listen to everyone, get everyone to the table and just weigh the, you know, the pros and cons. And the bottom line is, can we afford it? Can Brazos County's budget afford it? Not at this time but we're gonna do our best, okay? But we need you at that table.
Well, I'm happy to do anything I can do and I appreciate the Veterans Court.
Yes.
And them approaching and investigating that. Again, my thoughts are the same on it but as you and I spoke last Thursday, I view Brazos County as a very difficult place right now because we're not a big city, we're not a rural city. Big cities have a lot more resources than we have to provide the things that we're talking about from the Veterans Court and I don't know much about Veterans Court. I'm gonna be honest with you about that at this particular point in time but they've got a lot more resources to deal with these things. We're not, and this is not, I'm not being hopefully uncomplimentary but we're not Burleson County either. So I don't know if we can stand alone. I don't think it will work from a standalone perspective. We're gonna have to get a group of counties in and hopefully be the hub. As I was talking with Mr. Quinn about Veterans Court, I don't, A&amp;M ought to be a resource. I don't know how much they're willing but I think all of these things could be put in place with regards to if A&amp;M were to step in and help out in some way, fashion, form. I don't know what that looks like though as a, as a, from a pattern or a design but...
I think those would be possibilities Judge. Anytime we can partner with A&amp;M or, you know, any of the vast resources in Texas, we're better for it. We don't have to foot all the money but there are situations that won't allow that at times but that's again, something we have to study. We'll have to discuss in the workshop and make the decisions and the whole court makes the decision. There won't be a committee assigned. The court will make that decision at the proper time.
Judge, I had one question. I wanted to see if I could get you to address it. I was told yesterday that the staff that would be required for a mental health court, and I'm talking about approbation officer assigned to it and all that, that the staff would be very similar and could work simultaneously with the Veterans Court, that those two things would basically run at the same time.
I don't know that, I don't know that I can address that. I don't know enough about it.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Those are the things that we still have to discuss.
Yes, yes.
It sounds good but is it really plausible?
Absolutely.
And that's why the Commissioners Court must assemble a workshop and fully explore the possibilities. At this time, we're all learning and there's not a book to read.
It would make all the sense in the world for that to happen at least from what I have talked with the DA about as far as the numbers, very superficial at best, not digging into them but makes, makes common sense that it could be combined if needed be and the numbers were there. So, but other than that, I can't address it.
Well, and I would tell you Judge, in talking to other county judges in other counties, they, the ones that have public defenders offices, they told me that public defender's office has been helpful, very helpful in trying to determine the need for mental courts because they're dealing with a lot of clients out in their jails. So I think by us seeking that grant and starting and actually we, the public defender is now hired and he's looking after staff now so I think that's really critical in trying to move forward where there's a mental court or whatever. I think those things will, they'll be able to help us in the future to... I think those things will, they'll be able to help us in the future determining what that need is, too.
I don't, I don't think there's any doubt with that. And I've learned more about the public defender's office after talking with, who's gonna, what is it? Is he called the executive director? Is that what he's called?
Yes, Scott Ayer.
Okay, the executive director. In fact, I told him I wanted to go to lunch with him and find out a little bit more about The things I heard were positive. As you're well aware, we're having a hard time getting people to come up here and work.
Sure.
Both in the DA's office, on the defense side of cases, so, and I think that's part of our growing problem, a little bit.
Yes, definitely.
But, I mean, there's a lot of under, there's a lot of infrastructure there that I'm unfamiliar with, that's gonna have to be addressed, to figure out, okay, what is the problem? And as I was telling Mr. Quinn when we've got, when we were sitting here, a lot of times, you know, I hate to say it, but we're kinda working against ourselves on this sometimes, because of the lack of the legislature funding some resources, not through grants, just funding it. When people come in front of me, and I think they've got, and understand, the court, I think a lot of people think the courts have a lot of power to be able to do something, but I can't do anything except go to trial if the district attorney's office and/or the county's attorney's office don't agree to something. I cannot make them do something except go to trial where I can make the decision, decision based on evidence, and not everybody wants to do that. Neither the state or the defense, they don't wanna risk going in and getting an unknown thrown at them as far as a resolution. They'd rather, rather work out the resolution themselves. But because, right now, it's taking us two years to get somebody in to have them, their competency dealt with. Attorneys are really, and the clients, want to get out of the court system. And alls we're doing is prolonging the court system.
Right.
By having to go through that process, it can become two years, three years, on a case that they may be able to take care of in six months, when the need is really for them to go get help.
Yes.
But the interests are not getting together, because they're willing to offer it, but the person's not willing to take it, because they don't wanna be tied up in the system that long. So if the legislature, hopefully, I'm not gonna get in trouble for this, but would fund some money to take care of that, where it would, could become a premier system to send people to get mental help, help.
Help.
That, that's the under, that's the underlying issue that we deal with every day, is, everybody, including myself, thinks it's a good idea. I see it as a, an issue, in many of the cases that we deal with, we don't have a good solution.
We don't.
So...
You know, I...
But thank you.
I think this is great for one particular reason, is I think that typically governments are reactive as opposed to proactive. And we're talking about with the public defender's office, the Veterans Court, the mental health court, I think we're getting an opportunity to be proactive. Like I say, we're, like you said, Judge, we're not the big urban population, but we're transitioning there. And to be able to look at and put these things out there that we might wanna consider for the quality of life for not just Brazos County systems, but citizens. But I mean, as you mentioned, you know, we're regional, the whole idea behind the public defender's office, we've already talked about that becoming regional. The medical examiner's office, regional, once again, and as we have become, look at becoming proactively a regional hub, I'm glad that we're having the conversations and talking about this. I agree with you completely. The local mental health care infrastructure is, in Texas, but we're no exception, is almost nonexistent, because the money is not there to pay for the services for people like it was back in the maybe 1990s. There was a little ray of hope, I think, in the last legislative session, because in Centerville eight, in the special session, there was, I think, $360 million that the legislature appropriated, so maybe with their $40 billion of additional revenue, this by any of them, they'll continue to make some steps that direction for the state of Texas. But, you know, I really think that, you know, I hear, when I talk to other counties, and particularly sheriffs, and, you know, mental, inpatient mental health care in the state of Texas, by default, is now becoming incarceration in our county jails.
That's true.
And we need to break that system. There are benefits, you know, you see how it spills over. I mean, now we've got crisis intervention training for all of our patrol people, and it's necessary, but then what do you do? You get somebody who needs mental health treatment, and they end up in the jail, and they get released from the jail, and we're just kinda doing the same thing over and over again, and, you know, what's the idea, what's the definition of insanity, is is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result? So I'm really positive about all these things that we're talking about, public defender, Veterans Court, mental health, moving over to regional concept, even moving over to the medical examiner's office, and how that, that works. And I think doing more things that are proactive towards not just our local citizens and their needs, but regionally, what those citizens' needs are, I think that we're gonna find some gravity there, and I hope that that works out to be that way. Thank you for being here.
Well, I think, I think the sheriff office does a tremendous job, but they also, they also get caught in a situation, and they, they may get frustrated with us, because they'll say, "Look, I've got somebody here that would need some mental health," and I go, "I don't know what to tell you. I don't have any place to send them." I don't, you know, and so the first question that comes out of my mouth is, "Do they have insurance?"
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, eighty-five percent of them now don't have insurance. So, okay, well, let's send them over to MHMR, which is...
Overworked.
It's just overworked. I don't know how else to say it, they just, they just can't handle all the people we've got.
You're right.
We've got, one, two, three, I think, three or four mental health professionals that we send everybody to practically to do mental health evaluations. And again, I know the Commissioner's Court has probably seen it, I mean, is that we were working under antiquated times as far as salaries were concerned and payments to those, and they're going up.
They are.
Otherwise, they're getting off the list to, and they say, "I can't afford to do it for that price." And so we don't get many applications for qualified people to be able to send folks to for determination of what their mental status is for purposes of the legal system. And, you know, again, I, to some extent, I don't blame the county for it, I blame the state legislature for not providing the funding, but very, being very loose with a pen, says, "Yep, you know, something happened in my county this year, so we're gonna establish a whatever court it's gonna be, or establish this or that." Looks good on paper, money doesn't follow.
No money, you're right.
So...
No money, but thank you.
Unfunded, man, is the name of the...
Well...
Thank you, Judge.
Sure.
You are one of the most sensitive and...
I'm here anytime, Veterans Court, mental health court, whatever we can do.
Yes.
So...
Thank you, Judge.
Thank y'all.
The Commissioner's Court will be in contact with you and counting on you for your input, and we'll try to work with all of our judges, because this is not a situation that there's gonna be the big eyes and the little views. We have to work together. We have to respect one another's contribution, because everybody's not gonna be able to put a lot of money into it. I don't know of any agency that can't. But we work together, and the little bits do sometimes mount up. But thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good day.
You, too.
As a further matter discussion, Commissioner Colley, I know we agree on this, but this is not a get out of jail free card, just as the Veterans Court's not a get out of jail free card.
Oh, no.
It's an opportunity for those people to work their way through the system and to get better.
That's correct. That's my understanding, and I, I think it's a win-win, when we can help the citizens become more productive and have them join the rest of the, the population in trying to make Brazos County better. So I, my hopes are high, and I do pray that this court will continue to march on. I think we're headed in a great direction, in that we are considering all of these things and trying to make it work. Our motto has been in the past that we don't just get it started, but we have to figure out how this is going to succeed for as long as it's needed. And that's not a quick fix. Somebody said, "Well, why don't you just do it?" That doesn't work in Brazos County. It's not gonna work in government, period, but in Brazos County, that doesn't work. Where our hearts hurt and ache for the needs and filling the needs, we have to follow the law, number one, and then the other is that we have to make sure the money is there and the people, the right people are there. So it is a time-consuming, this is my last court, I can say I'm gonna miss it, but I just believe this court is gonna get it done. I just believe that, and thank you all.
Okay, we had a couple of people that wanted to speak. Thomas Marty?
Good morning, and thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to come before you today to speak on this mental health court issue, which I firmly believe is hand-in-hand with the Veterans Court. I was here before you a couple of weeks ago and spoke of this, and I look forward to the workshop that's gonna come here in the next couple of weeks, if not months, to make that happen. But understand that the mental health issue is a component of a Veterans Court, and the VA does offer services for veterans that need that. So be it come through a mental health court or a Veterans Court, there are avenues out there to take care of some of the burden that you're talking about. There's funding that comes from both the state and federal government to run these programs. So what I hope is that this conversation will continue, and the support of this Commissioner's Court will continue to get both of these things taken care of in the near future, and let's hope that we can all work together, as Commissioner Colley has spoken, and make this happen for this county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Maxim Hines?
Maxine Henzie. I am speaking from a perspective of a parent, guardian, a healthcare provider of a 37-year-old individual who has mental illness. So I have been dealing with this, for mental illness, with over 25 years. I've been a fairly active member of NAMI, and I've taken the family course in Florida. I've lived in three different states. I've worked as a nurse and a professor in three different states, so I'm kinda familiar with the healthcare system, not so much with the judicial system in very, and other places, but certainly I am here. I just want to mention, I wanna support the formation of a mental health court and encourage mental health spending to help individuals. One of the things I think we have to understand is that the mentally ill are one of the most disenfranchised, vulnerable, abused, forgotten groups in this community, in every community, but certainly in this community. They are a vilified group. We spend very little money on it. I think we spend, if I had known about this more, I would've looked up more information. I think we spend more on taking care of our animals, our pets, than we spend on mental health. I don't, don't quote me on that. I'm, I was gonna look up, I think at one time, Texas was 49th in their spending on mental health. Don't quote me on that, because I don't know for sure. I would, would've spent some time looking that up, but we are very, very, it's shameful what we do not spend on mental health. This group is not a cute or cuddly group. They haven't earned a lot of money. They haven't, they're not the elderly, where they've had family that, that loved them, yet these individuals need to be taken care of, and they need to be loved as much as anyone else. And that is one of the reasons why we don't have spending on them, is one of the reasons why no one wants to talk about it. It is stigmatized, it is totally, people are ostracized, and so I've been through all of that through my life. And I refuse to be stigmatized about having a child that has mental illness. We are more compassionate for our animals than we are for people with mental illness. Think about that. And we do more for them. Most people are totally clueless about what it takes to deal with someone that has mental illness, and they don't care about it, at least they don't think they care about it, or they don't wanna know about it, unless they're a family member, unless they know someone that affects them individually. They are absolutely, totally clueless of what it takes. I don't know, I probably would ask someone to raise their hand of how many know someone that has a severe mental illness, a psychosis, and what it takes to try to raise someone like that. I shouldn't say someone like that, that's not very good terminology. When I say totally clueless, I really mean totally clueless what, what they do of how, what it takes. I do wanna comment, the sheriff's office has been incredible. They are absolutely incredible. And like I said, I'm speaking from someone that has had a son that has been incarcerated fairly recently and just recently released, so I've had dealings with MHMR and with the sheriff's office and with the judicial area. Like I said, the sheriff's office has been absolutely incredible. How they go about doing that, I do not know, because they are absolutely incredible. They have had training, and they know how to diffuse that. The College Station Police Department has been very good. I don't know too much about the Bryan Police Department, I just know one incident was not particularly great. I do wanna mention that as a point of, of comment about people that are doing very good, the studies show that individuals that have a good...
Sorry, your time's up. Sorry.
Okay. Well, we spent a lot of time, other person's spent a lot of time up here, but... Okay, well, I wanted to get to, well, okay, I just, just wanna know that this is absolutely, absolutely needed. And one thing about the crisis intervention, I am gonna mention this. I called the Crisis Center. Unless they are going to be, my son was in terrible shape, I called. I might get emotional here. Unless he was gonna hurt me or hurt himself, they didn't wanna hear about it. So the crisis line is very much a misnomer. They try very hard. MHMR tries very hard, but there is no money for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please stay involved.
I think, I'd like to propose that we do a workshop with all the parties involved for both the mental...
Can I speak for just a second?
Sure.
Sorry. I was on the list.
Okay, come on up, John.
I apologize for not getting on the list, but my name's John Quinn, I'm a local criminal defense lawyer, and I spoke about the Bedford's Court a little while ago, but it occurs to me they really are related from a defense point of view, for me to understand how to defend people who commit crimes. Some of them really do have veteran issues, some of them have mental health issues, some have both. And it makes it almost impossible, if I don't recognize those things or understand them, to deal with them. But even when I recognize them and try to deal with them, there have to be resources to provide that help, or they're just gonna keep doing whatever they're doing. Two and a half years ago, I completed a PhD in psychology, not 'cause I was bored, but because it helps me understand why people do what they do. And how can I help them change that so they don't keep doing it? That's what we're really talking about here. There are too many people in the criminal justice system in particular, but also just in this county...
Yeah.
...that are on the edge of the criminal justice system, waiting for something bad to happen, that we could help, but we have to understand it before we can figure out a way... out a way to help them. So, I'm proud of you for considering this, because this is the first step. We're trying to understand how big the problem is, and then figure out what the resources we need to deal with it are, and how in the world are we going to pay for them? But please keep investigating this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My motion is for us to have a workshop where we discuss both the mental health court and the Veterans Court, and have all the appropriate people present so that we can discuss how we can afford it. Do we need to have people in place to start these courts? And all of the people and programs in place that we need to have to establish both the mental health court and the Veterans Court.
I'm honored to second that motion, and I, I hope the court will arrange this soon rather than later.
Okay, so, we've got a motion and a second to have a workshop in the future to to discuss mental health and Veterans Court.
Yes.
This really is on mental court, is really where, that's what the agenda is, is mental court, not...
Yeah, I prefer, I prefer to see them.
But...
If we're going to do workshops, I'd prefer to see them individually, because there's resources and, you know, people who are necessary and essential for input from a veteran's perspective. I think there is a lot of overlap, like we've had a whole lot of people say, but I'd like to have, have one on mental health and one on Veterans Court.
Commissioner, since we...
And then, and then we could put those all together at the appropriate time.
I'd like to amend my motion to just do the mental health court, and then when we go to future agenda items, I can propose that...
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
We can't take action on future agenda items. We can't take action on it.
No.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, we've got a motion and a second to have a future workshop on mental health.
And Judge, it's been brought to my attention, there was a motion early on to take action on the item. I'm not sure if it was clear on what action would be taken, but I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, there was a motion and a second, but I wasn't, there's...
Okay, so, I amend the motion, amend the original motion to do a workshop...
You made the motion, I believe, and then...
No, no, I second it. Commissioner Colley made it. But I, I do believe that this is the action that was referred to in that motion, so you tell us how to stay within, within the rules of order. Do we vote first? We've already discussed it, so do we...
I, I think if Commissioner Berry amends the original motion...
And she did.
Yep, okay. So, I'm amending the original motion that we have a future workshop on a mental health court.
And I second that.
Okay, so, we've got a motion and a second to amend the original motion.
So, we vote on the amendment first and then...
But we still got a motion out there that we never voted on.
That'll come next. We, we vote on the amendment, and then we vote on the original motion. There was really nothing, the motion was...
Well, no, 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 I'm, I'm talking about when we opened the discussion. When we opened the discussion, there was a motion and a second, and there was no vote taken, if I remember correctly.
So, what was the motion to do?
Discuss and take...
There was no clarification on what that motion...
Yeah, that's what I'm driving at.
So, you've got a motion and a second that's out there that's, there's been no vote on.
Okay, so, this is amending that motion, the original motion, to clarify what that is, the action that's not clarified in the first motion.
All right. As long as we're getting back to the beginning, I'm good.
That's where we're going with it.
Okay. Sometimes you just got to bring, you got to bring me there. I apologize.
Okay, so, we got a motion and a second to amend the first motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. And now, we'll go back to the original motion, what's to take action. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. All right, that's gets number eight. Number nine is approval order, approval of order exempting contract from Unger Boick from competitive bidding persistent to LGC 262.024A7.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number ten is approval of contract 23-098 with TextMyGov for Brassus County elections.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion.
Judge, I was hoping that we might consider tabling this for the new Commissioners Court panel. I don't think there's an emergency on this item, and it's something that they, they probably would like to have some input on, so is it appropriate at this time that I would also move to table while we have a motion on the floor?
Well...
Well, we got a motion and a second to approve it. I guess if you want to...
Move to table.
You can move, you can make a motion to table.
Okay. Judge, I'd like to make a motion to table, item number ten, for the futures Commissioners Court that's going to come to work at our next regular meeting to allow them consideration and discussion on this issue.
I'll second the motion to table.
Okay, motion made, seconded to table.
Judge, I don't...
You want to speak?
I have very little, if any, input that may or not be, I don't know if there's any time sensitivity to this contract. As, as I understand it, and I may be incorrect, as I understand it, this is a notification it's to help some of the backlog of common questions and concerns and stuff that elections receives, to allow them to provide a response to that. But I don't know if there's any upcoming...
I'd like for our future Commissioners, the Commissioners that are coming on board, to have the opportunity to research this thing. To be honest with you, Charles, I, I'm not even sure that I understand the need for it. I did hear about it on the news last night, but I'd, I'd love to have more information before we just go spending money.
And I have no input on that whatsoever, Commissioner Hodges.
Yeah, and there was a discount, and I don't know whether that discount was based on it happening before the end of the year, that I don't know, but I know it's, I think there was maybe it was, I don't remember, maybe thirteen thousand, and it was down to nine thousand for the setup fees and that sort of thing. I talked to Trudy about it. She told me that during the election, they were constantly having phone calls, that, that even the judges weren't able to contact elections, because they were answering a lot of general questions that, you know, come up over and over and over. And so, this would be a way for people to be able to notify and, and get their questions answered without having a person that's answering it for all those voters out there, because a lot of them are the same thing. And then, hopefully, open up the, the lines, and I think we've got eight lines that go into elections administration, and that's what was happening. It was tied it up, and the judges couldn't even get calls into elections to, for their needs. And so, that was the purpose that she told me, that, that it was needed. I don't know whether there's something that's timely. I know there is a discount based on it passing, but I don't know, I don't know about that, and I'd hate to put it off, and then it costs more money.
Judge, in our packet, the discount would be the setup fee is being waived, and that fee was four thousand five hundred dollars. So, the ongoing cost annually would be nine thousand dollars.
Commissioner, I would ask, what would, what would additional phone lines cost? I mean, isn't it...
This is texting.
But you got to have people to answer them.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm saying. For a four thousand dollar setup and a nine thousand dollar fee, is it possible that we could just set up more phone lines?
Are you asking the...
And hire more people to answer the phones. That's, that's the point.
If Brassus County, sir...
Right, right.
Are you asking if Brassus County could set up extra phones?
Yes.
I don't think the question is about extra phones. You're going to have to have personnel that know what, what they're doing and, and be educated to give the answers. There are a lot of benefits, as I can...
But someone answers these text messages also, don't they?
No, that's an automatic.
No, no, it's automatic.
It's got automatic, they can set up questions.
It's an automatic response.
This is TextMyGov, not text messages itself, but there are...
Other things, I mean, whether it's potholes, I mean, they've talked about all kinds of different things that it could be. This is for elections, because we, she, Trudy saw the need for a, those general questions that can come in, and they're over and over, the same thing, and you've got somebody sitting there that's having to answer that and tying up phone lines.
I understand. Judge, I'm not against this. I just think that we, the, the new Commissioners Court should be allowed to, to do some research on it before we decide to do it. That's, that's my only concern, is just that I did not know enough about it, and I appreciate this discussion here. Thank you so much.
Well, I, I think it's important that we save forty-five hundred dollars, and we don't have the personnel to answer phones, even if we put up separate phone lines, and these are given questions that people frequently ask during elections, and it would be set up to do that. So, it makes sense to me.
And I would agree. It, it meets a special need, and it's nothing more frustrating than someone that's wanting to vote, and, and the lines are busy, or, or no one's able to answer because they're overflowing with calls.
Yeah, and this is a voluntary, you can, if you want to be notified of lots of information, you can, you can voluntarily get into it, and then those notifications will be passed out to whoever is, is in it. So, there's, there's a lot of benefit to it.
And those that have questions can call in, Commissioner, and have their questions It just, there are a lot of benefits. There's, you know, there are text messages that they send you, right, but it just enhances the whole voting process, and it would be an asset to Judy's, to Trudy's office. She came in and explained she's not able to man phones. That's been one of the biggest problems that she's had as our board administrator.
Would it, would it be possible, Commissioner, to take these frequently asked questions and, and the answers and to just put them on our website, or to put them in some other place where we didn't have to pay for somebody to text those in?
Commissioner, we need to consider the fact that everybody's not text savvy. I, I would hate to say if you can text, you can ask the question, but there are some people that don't have the, the apps, the phone, the knowledge, you know, we, we have to think...
But Commissioner, you're making my point, is that this doesn't serve the entire community.
But it does.
Well, yeah, but they can call in. If you don't have it, you can call in, but that would make, that would open up the lines again for those, those folks.
Exactly. So...
We have a motion to table. I think we can vote on that.
Yeah, okay. The motion was to, motion is second to table. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Now, I think your first motion was to approve...
The contract.
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? So, let me ask. I thought your hands stayed up through both motions, so I, I mean, far and against, so I...
Just raising, just raising my hand thing. I, I voted for the, the motion to table. I voted for, but since we're not going to table this, I voted to go ahead and approve it.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify.
Good, thank you. Thank you for checking. I need checking up on, on a regular basis.
Yeah, all right. So, number ten passes. Number eleven is approval of contract 23-100, event management software with Unger Boick for Brassus County expedition complex.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number twelve is tax refund application for the following.
I move approval, A through E.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number thirteen is budget amendments, budget amendments FY 22, 23, budget amendments 12.01 through 12.02.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number fourteen is personnel change status.
Move approval.
A and B.
A and B.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve A and B discussion.
I am very happy to see that we've been able to add personnel to the juvenile service detention. Again, that's part of the services that we provide to Brassus County, but we've had some time, some difficult challenges in hiring, and it looks like they've got two, four, six, six new people.
That's good.
Yeah.
All, we hadn't voted on that yet, have we? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.